Maybe it wasn't pushed in all the way.
So I thank you.
I think it just wasn't pushed in all the way.
Okay, at six o'clock, we're gonna call this being to order. We're here tonight just strictly to discuss budget items. So Jim, I guess I'll turn it over to you.
Actually, I don't know that I have anything to... We presented the budget the last time, and this is up to you for any questions or anything that you wanted to talk about, if there are some adjustments that you wanted to talk about, or where are you at as a council?
All right, council, let's get down to business.
This is gonna be easy, I think. The resurfacing of the parking lots downtown, one behind Expert Tire and the one at Sixth and Washington. Particularly the one at Sixth and Washington, why are we even keeping that parking lot in our inventory? I never see more than three or four cars parked there. It's a business owner across the street, and it's not generating any revenue to speak of. Why not just put it on the market? We'll get more out of it off the... It's tax-based than what we will off the parking revenues.
I think I remember when the Methodist Church, though, was redoing their building, that I think they thought at that time that that would be used more for parking there. And there is development more on that block on Jefferson that would need parking if, like, Skylers are developing the Bookend buildings, that's right behind the Bookend buildings.
So they'd be good to market it to then.
I guess they think that it would be parking, downtown parking, or for anybody who wants to park there.
Does anyone pay to park there?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are vehicles that park there, I think 24 hours a day, I see there. Whether they are 24 hours a day.
Do you know if we have... Are all of the spaces rented all of the time, or some of the time, or?
There's some vehicles, though, that are parked there all the time.
But there's only one spot that you know of that's...
That'd be great. Check on that one, that other one over by, behind Expert Tire, too.
This proposal, the property tax 60 cents, right?
Correct.
Now, how does that reflect them through the next four years?
It'd be that same level for, I mean, absent the other things that can go on in life, but it's anticipated to be that same level for the next five years. And again, the sixth year, the biggest thing that... One of the big things that's driving that is building up the cash balance and paying off the deficit accounts. Should have the... If we hold true to what is presented in that budget, should have that accomplished in five years and be able to lower the levy in a comparable amount, which, that's five years out, but I just sort of estimated that'd be about a 50 cent levy amount that you could look at to reduce it because you weren't trying to build up cash reserves or pay off deficits.
I guess I have a problem that we are looking at raising the taxes, and there are items that have no consideration at all. There's no consideration for Cascade Bridge. There's no consideration in that amount for law enforcement building. There is a little... There's some consideration down the road for the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, but... It's like giving candy to a child that just loves candy.
I feel like we've gotta cut and cut those things because we don't have money.
Really, again, the goal on debt service long-term should be to get to a spot where what was recommended from Travis, if you're building a debt schedule that's... Has a good laddering in it, it allows you to bring on 1.75 to $2 million of annual new projects. The CIP that's in here is more in the 1.5 million range on average over the five years, which is below, but we're at 70% of debt capacity right now, and we have a high property tax asking the way our current debt's structured. Again, the recommendation is if you want to be to a level for a community apart, I mean, what you should have, what's appropriate, what's average, what most places are doing for debt service for capital projects, it's about a $3 property tax asking. And that's where he comes up with the... You can afford to do about 1.75 to $2 million based off of our... The community's valuation. If you get above that, you can certainly do it, but you're putting yourself at a comparatively high tax amount for debt service projects. Doesn't mean that you can't do it, it's just that's what he's recommending. With how our debt is structured, to any other projects that you look to bring on, the only way you can do that is by increasing taxes.
And it's not your fault. I mean, you've done a phenomenal job in bringing all this together. Unfortunately, we're paying the piper for the last...
Ten years, right?
Ten to 15 years of fiscal irresponsibility and lack of oversight.
There's... I think there's been a lack of guidance, and I don't think so much irresponsibility. I mean, you've got to have buildings that your employees can work in. I mean, we had to have a fire station at the airport. We had to have a fire station that the employees could work in in the downtown. I mean, there wasn't a lot of extras put into that. I mean, it was something that was needed. The public works facility, we had people working all over town. So we've gotta face this issue head-on and quit shaking a finger at the people that were there before. You're shaking that finger at me. And I sat here, and we swallowed an awful big pill to get things done in this community. And keep in mind also that when we're talking about this community and what we have and what we're paying for, there's only 150... Let's... The bees are here, let's talk about that first. There's 154 communities in this, in the United States that have professional baseball. We're the smallest one. There's nobody else we can compare to in our population for that. We've got... There's only seven cities in the state of Iowa that have commercial aviation. We're one of them. We're one of the smallest ones to have it. We've got a riverfront. There's a lot of communities with riverfronts, but not that have riverfronts and have those other two. We've got the largest park system in the state by far for a community our size. So we've got all of that that has to be paid for, that has been paid for, that was neglected in the past. So that's where that debt came from. And then also, all these surprises that came about, and all piled on in one year, when he talks about the $9 million that we had to take on at one time, because we weren't being appraised by the management then. Things are cool now. I mean, things are starting to happen. But let's quit shaking the fingers at people and say, "Let's bite the bullet and do what's gotta be done to get to the position that our professional management is telling us to get to."
What's your definition of biting the bullet? I don't understand that part.
Bite the bullet, doing what we're doing right now, following the financial advice. And then saying that there are things in the budget that we need to take a hard look at. And one of the things is simple, is the parking lot that I talked about at Sixth and Washington. You know, do we really need to have that in our inventory? Would it be... You know, somebody can use that either privately, or they can improve it and make money off of it.
But do we want it private? Because we have development downtown, and if we have private lots, then that doesn't leave it open to different, you know, businesses to use. It shuts out people.
How much money is in that?
Twenty-four thousand, twenty-six thousand.
I mean, I can see not resurfacing it, but I hope the city continues to own it because I... We were short of parking downtown. Why would we give up another parking lot?
And we had this discussion 12 years ago, and it still never has more than five or six cars in it except during steamboat days or during a parade downtown. And even then, you can't probably get up there. Even on Sundays, there's barely any parking in that parking lot.
But the whole block of 500 is going under this facade, you know, getting new facades, and people are investing in it, and are investing in it, and are going to expect a place to have places for people to park. But if you buy it, then you take those off of the... You take that away from everybody.
Let's not spend $26,000 in now. Let's see if the development occurs, and then...
I'd be fine with that.
It's local option sales tax dollars.
I just don't wanna see it stolen.
And did you have an answer on how many are...
How many spots are there total?
And the one by Expert Tire? Okay. So we have two projects, one's for $26,000 and one's for $39,000 for resurfacing. Okay. So we have some resurfacing money that's in the budget for this year, and I asked the question, do you need to... I mean, do we need to resurface it? And that's a pretty good chunk of money, that's.
There's three semis back there, two of them full of junk metal. And then there's two private tree trimming businesses. They're the ones that lease those lots.
Maybe we could let them lease the one that doesn't have... I mean, I'd rather have money to fix the streets in a parking lot at this point.
I would agree.
I mean, streets are...
This is coming out of local option sales tax dollars.
But I agree, to wait a year, because if there's not very many, how much worse is it gonna get if there's only two cars?
So that's how much? Let's start this going together then. $39,000 for the one and...
$65,300 is the total, Bob. So I mean, there's...
Pushing it off a year doesn't help. If you're getting rid of them, it does. But pushing it off a year just makes a problem.
For next year.
For next year.
But we have four users, four paying users for it at this point, so...
Well, to determine it, if you think that you don't want it, that's fine. You can get rid of them. But if you're gonna have them and maintain them, either maintain them. If you don't wanna maintain them and not do the improvements, don't do them. Drop it off the full five-year schedule. Don't push it back a year, because in the long run, it doesn't make any... It doesn't help that any fund out over a five-year period.
I'd take them off completely. I mean, unless the parking fund is making enough money to pay for their stuff.
I would say we just patch the holes.
Because here we have, on the other hand, we have groups saying we need parking lots downtown. And so why would we be selling off parking lots and then buying parking lots later? I mean, you know...
I don't have a problem if we keep them. I don't think we need to resurface them. And that goes probably for the full five years.
I guess. Because I think we should see if there is gonna be development. If we have development, and I know there is development, part of that development, then why do we... Then we're gonna need parking, so. And even the development I'm involved in, part of the question was where would people park? There's a parking lot there.
What is the minimum that we can do to these two parking lots so that they're not a danger that people can get in and out without spending that money on resurfacing?
Gravel.
Because I think everybody's kinda getting to the same thing. We don't wanna sell it right away because we're not sure what's going to happen. And, you know, I know you said pushing it down a year is not gonna help us, but I really don't see how it's gonna hurt just because we still don't know what's gonna happen, and we can still patch it up to... It's a parking lot. It's not, you know, it's not even a parking lot the size of the auditorium. It's two small parking lots.
Well, I agree. Until the parking fund gets where it needs to be, you know, take it from the revenues, or, I mean, we should be generating... The other... I have another silly question, maybe, but do we post anything that leads people to where they can call if they would like to rent there by the month? Is there anything posted that indicates that? Do you know? Okay, so it does direct them to... Thank you, I appreciate... Because, I mean, I might know where to go to, but, you know, someone new in town or maybe new to living in the downtown may not know that they can actually rent some of those spaces out, so. Thank you.
And I think when we have events like the criteria and things like that, we need all those parking. I think they do get used to it.
Yeah, you're not gonna generate enough tax dollars on them to end with somewhere else to build them, but you're not gonna generate enough tax dollars.
But you don't generate tax dollars on the parking down on the streets either, unless you get a ticket, so that doesn't generate tax dollars. But you have to have parking available if you want businesses to have places for their customers to park.
So where are we then? In the parking lot. We're gonna wait for Steve and find out how much it's gonna cost to patch it, and...
We can listen to what he has to say, but it's $65,300.
All right, well, we'll hold that in the back of our heads, make a middle note until Steve gets here. Let's keep it rolling. I'm still... I'm back to the bees. And since you're here, I do wanna address that. I still don't understand why we can't deduct some of the money that we've been given to the bees. We've had everybody except for the Burlington Bees. Not in a personal, but to try to cut back, why have we not touched that?
Mainly because you have an agreement that says what you've agreed to give to them through 2024. If you wanna approach them and ask if they would like be willing to renegotiate, you certainly can. But the council agreed to a schedule of what they were gonna cover.
2011, 2010?
2010. And it went through the life of the existing debt that we financed.
So it's contractual?
It's a contractual.
How long is that contract till when?
2024.
Pretty high price to pay for that baseball team.
What's the... What is... I'm not sure I even understand how that contract reads. It says that they start paying back the debt in this year, $11,988.
Yep.
And that is to cover their portion of the debt. Is the full $700 not their portion of the debt, or?
I don't know what that was based off of. It was a schedule for what they're agreeing to pay off of it, and the remainder is the city agreed to pay for.
So the $50,000 through the local option sales tax, that's contractual till 24?
Yep.
Correct. And the utilities, how long is that contract due till?
They're all part of the same agreement.
So the contract, the one I'm reading, says they pay $11,977.60 one time per year on a $700,000 debt.
Yeah, the debt schedule... What's that? That they pay.
That's close to the interest?
For this, the interest is $113,772. When on a non-corporate purpose bond, the council can only approve up to $700,000, right, before it has to go to referendum? Is that correct? And then my big concern is that they approved $700,000, and then in that contract allowed them to pay additional $50,000, or the $50,000 that they were receiving could go towards paying additional debt. How's that read?
I think that was for the first year. It was just the very first year. We could have used that towards paying off some of the debt.
It says, it is understood and agreed that the payment beginning July 1st, 2012, may be used to retire the association's remaining debt over and above the payment made by the city on March 8, 2011.
Still only bonded for 700... We only bonded for $700,000 now, so the rest of it was being done out of operations. It wasn't a bonded. So it doesn't violate the terms of that regardless. I... You're correct that they have the ability to cover through that agreement more than $700,000 worth of capital, but it doesn't violate the terms of what could be done.
It says debt, but it's in the agreement. That just bothers me. It's a misrepresentation to the public, and that's what our charge is, is to protect the public's interest. And it just... It was just put together in a way that I don't think is appropriate. And it's not... I'm not saying it's the bees' fault. I think the staff at the time knew what they were doing, and then it just smacks of inappropriateness, I guess. I don't... What's the... What are the funds being paid for now? What are they being used for now?
The $50,000?
Yeah.
It's actually for the stadium, for maintenance. I mean, we renovated in '05, and all of a sudden, now we're in a situation... Last year, we actually did ice, which was $230,000, which, you know, we ended up going out and also raising part of the money and using the $50,000 for that, which we also still have some debt through the bank loan that we're paying off. We also had to redo our field, resurfaced our field because it's been 15 years. You know, some people say, "Well, why would you have to resurface a field?" You know, it's based on seven years to replace it just because of wear and tear. We waited almost 12 years to replace it. So basically, the money is for the maintenance of the state because the building's the city owns. They own the whole, you know, the whole set of buildings out there as the city's. You know, that's their building. So it's more of a maintenance thing now for us because after '05 was renovating, now we're in the process, so we just gotta be able to maintain it.
Has the association ever considered buying the building?
No, we don't have the money.
Excuse me, was it just a dollar?
It wouldn't help us, I mean, because you're still talking maintenance side of it. Because the city also has an agreement with 48 for the land they...
Of that, too, yeah. Because the city doesn't own the land.
Right, 48 doesn't... But there's an agreement with them also, as long as there's professional baseball there. You know, they lease it to the city for a dollar.
I've got some questions on equipment, but I guess I'll wait till Steve gets here on that.
So are you satisfied there's nothing you can do on that?
Well, I think some talks need to be had. It wasn't so bad when it was, you know, when we were contributing $50,000 a year, but when you come up to $700,000 and then the repayment doesn't even cover the interest, and then another $50,000 on top of that, and the way utilities have gone, that's just... That's asking an awful lot from the public. And we can't even pay our own bills. I mean, I guess that's where the issue is. We're laying off firefighters and police officers, not rehired, or we're not filling positions. We cut $300,000 from the library, and for some reason, there's... We can't do anything about the... Even the employees took a cut in their raise last year. You know, it went from three and a half to 2%, but we can't touch money that we're giving to a private organization.
But the other side of the coin is, I mean, you just stood up and said how you love having this baseball team and all the acumen's that go along with having that. I mean, so...
I didn't say anything about loving it. I said, "We need to understand that that's..."
But everything has its price. I think that's the ticket to it.
And it's one of those things that a past council, just like the other stuff. I mean, it's like a past council has signed a contract, and we're committed to follow through with that. I wanna see how we can get out of a contractual arrangement like that.
Is the association open to conversation to help the city in any way at all?
The answer to that, the short answer is yes. But at that time, there's a lot of history that people are not aware of, like the Five From Vision Iowa type of thing, and how those money were originally distributed, the fact that ours was the first project done.
Since we're having the conversation, can we have him come to the... Can you come to the podium, please?
Dave Walker, 708 Terrace Drive. At the time that the Vision Iowa project was put together, it included the trails, it included the auditorium, it included the library, the historical society, and a community field and that type of thing. One of the reasons that I think the city felt a little bit of an obligation towards the bees is, we did our project, it was quote, shovel-ready, or whatever that means. And when we agreed, when we got the grant, which was supposed to come in at 1.7, but came in at 1.4, I mean, 5.4, we got done, we opened up that season with the thing, and asked for our reimbursement from there with the allocation that was there, and that reimbursement did not come for 16 months. And we sat there with a completed project and had a bank note out there for better than $1 million waiting for that to come through. So there was a stress that we were put under through... No, you can't say it was this person's fault or not this fault, but we incurred a terrific amount of money that was, you know, sort of wasted just because the rest of the project hadn't kept pace. And when we turned in our bills and stuff like that, it sat on for a while. Now, there's other things like that that I can relate that I think... Now, there's other things like that that I can relate that I think maybe people need to know. But I was there, I represented them at that time. With the Bee's there, when the city was there with the auditorium things and this type of thing. And there are some mitigating circumstances. Not binding, I wouldn't say, but I would say that there was certainly a feeling that, that there was a reason that that gap of the funding laid in there. And, you know, yeah, we'll talk to you about it, because that's an important thing. It's the Bee's to this town. As Tim said, you know, you, you've become one of 160 cities that have professional baseball. And it, you know, it's, it's near and dear to our hearts and obviously the facility we have out there that has had $5 million put into it in the last five years of that, you know, less than 25% of it is being done by the owner of the thing. So, you know, you have an enhanced thing. And if there is no baseball and we walk away from the thing, you can, I guess, mow the parking lot like we do and you know, sit there and watch it crumble, but you know, that's not our goal. Our goal is to keep pace with things, keep it maintained. Which I think anybody that's been out there will, would have to agree that we've, we've done. But the financing on this type of thing, it got to the place where carrying that burden was impossible for us because we're a break even kind of a, a situation. We're not a Dayton or Grand Rapids or somebody like that that has it. There's no private dollars there. I can tell you that I personally have invested more money in the Bee's than an annual payment by the city, shall we say. So there's a lot of, of private dollars in there that are done strictly because of a, a community effort. And that's the reason our board serves. It's like being on the school board or anything else. You serve without pay. You serve to try and provide something for the citizens of Burlington to appreciate. And that's where we are.
Well, I want to say that it's a beautiful park. I, I had a chance to walk through and see all the, all the ins and outs. And I, I think you guys did a heck of a job with that. I don't think we're trying to, I hope you guys don't take it the wrong way. We're not trying to poo poo on all the hard work and everything that went into the Bee's Park. But the bottom line is, we're trying to get this budget down to zero. Everybody, you know, these are crunch times and we're asking everybody to, to help us in it. And I'm reaching out right now during the meeting to the Bee's to see that if, if you guys would be willing to, to help us out as well.
Well, I think we should, we should sit down, we should discuss and find out what you're looking for. My whole purpose and what I just said is that there are reasons the previous city council had that they thought were valid to make an assistance with us with regard to that gap financing. You know, and the reason that we still have the 11,000 that we're paying you is because we were able to get the money obviously cheaper while the city was borrowing that way. It was a matter of getting it there or getting it someplace else, is what it boiled down to. You know, we did it with all hands on deck, all, everything wide open. There was no inference that we tried to cajole anything that was not or there. So, you know, it's, you have to make a commitment to the facility because Major League Baseball has certain facility standards and we have to keep those up. And, you know, it's, that's why we spend the money where we spend it.
So can we talk tomorrow?
Tomorrow?
Yep.
Yeah. What time, where?
We'll, we'll talk about that after the meeting. But I, I definitely, I want to say, I want to say thank you in advance for for your help. And, and also for, for breaking down and explaining to us again. I, I know when you were, when you were mentioning some of the things, we had talked about some prior things that had happened in regards to the Bee's Park. But, yeah, we're, we're looking for, we're looking for to make a few more cuts where we can. And, and where we can't, we definitely need to, to sit down and talk and see if we can make.
If there are ways that we can help you without jeopardizing our franchise, we certainly would take a look at it. Every one of us that serves on that board is a good corporate citizen of the city of Burlington. And the only reason we do it is to enhance the place where we live, not to become a detriment to it. And don't forget, there is a $4.3 million annual impact because the Bee's are there. If you, part of the agreement, Jason Hutchison made a survey of the thing when we were making a proposal with the city to come up with what it is. And when you consider the, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in salaries that are paid to the people that are here for a half a year and the amount of, you know, money that we deal with, with vendors in town and things like that. You know, it's a small business sitting out there, but not in the business of running those things off. All right, but name the time, name the date.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Hey, Dave, was that a, was that a cat grant or was that part of the, the Vision Iowa grant?
Yeah, and that got a little bit more sticky, if you remember. By the time we got done with the thing, the trails, because they turned up a three-toed snail or something like that. And one of their things ended up with having to have environmental studies done. And by the time we got ready to divide everything up, they had to cut, they made it a cat grant to the, to the county, but a Vision Iowa to the other four fifths of it, which further exacerbated the delays and things like that. I mean, it was just, one of the things that you run into when you try and do a project, a $25 million project for $5 million is what, basically, you know, we got five, a little over 5 million from the state of Iowa. You know, and turned it into $25 million worth of improvements to everything, including the Bee's stadium. And that's why we had a private fund drive to raise almost $2 million to augment what we got from Vision Iowa. There. Did that answer that? Yes. You know, you know, we'd be glad to sit down and talk and get you people back up to speed on what's going on. And we're sympathetic to the place. I mean, I would take ostrich with his head in a stand and I understand that there's financial problems. We're just hoping that we can continue with the tradition that's been here for 100 years and we can continue to provide this level of entertainment to people. Some quality of life issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Just a little more history, counsel. And about nine months before they announced that they were going to do a Vision Iowa project, the future Burlington Committee from the Chamber had come to ask the city manager and myself to attend a meeting. And they wanted to talk about doing the Vision Iowa project. They asked me about it and at the time I said, no. I said, one, I'm a little concerned that we're, our debt limit's getting a little high. And the other was, we had just come to an agreement on the, on the library and, and building a new library. And they, everybody in the room was pretty ticked off at me. And we, the city manager and I weren't invited back, at least I wasn't invited back. And two days after I left office, I got invited to a special announcement that they were having down at the Chamber of Commerce. And that's when they announced that they were going to do the Vision Iowa project. And that, and as the mayor of this community, I knew nothing of it. And they said they had buy-in from the county and from the, from the city and, and the others. And it was pretty embarrassing, to say the least. And I, I just have to say that, you know, the, the part of that project was the, the trails and the Big Hollow. And, and they had to end up giving money back because they couldn't raise the, the necessary funds. The, the auditorium was a part of that project and that, those never got capitalized. The, the Bee's project, no fault of theirs, but just through the over eagerness, I guess, that that project didn't get completed and didn't, didn't get funded. And it had to have additional funds brought in from the city. And all in all, the, the Vision Iowa project was not successful. I mean, it, it got some things done, but it, it, it wasn't successful. It was, and I was right.
Yeah, well, I would argue that because I think wasn't the library part of that too?
The library was part of that.
And the things that we gained from that, I mean, there, there was a lot of things that we gained from the Vision Iowa.
The library was a done deal. They used the library to capitalize to get the $5 million from the state.
Yeah.
And it's, and, and the library cost us next to nothing. When you look at, look at that facility and the private funds that were put into that. Excuse me?
That was part of the deal to build a new library was to, to do that. So I feel like the community gained a lot through that, a lot. I, I feel like it was successful.
I didn't, I'm not saying it didn't gain, but it wasn't a success. If it was a success, then we wouldn't be talking about being short $700,000 on, on that project. We wouldn't have had to give money back for the Big Hollow project. And we wouldn't have the debt issue that we have that was created through all of it, along with the, the not capitalizing the funds down at Memorial Auditorium. Not saying we didn't gain from it, but it's cost us a lot and it's still costing us today. It's going to cost us until 2024.
All right. Let's get back to business.
It's on the, can I keep going?
Go ahead, roll it.
Uh, there's, there's a bus replacement. Um, the other night Steve said it really didn't need it. Um, is that, did I read you right when you, when you said that? I mean, it's, it's just because the funds are there that we want to?
That, that is it. Sorry for being late. I had, I was at a transit meeting and I had hoped all the questions I raised at the meeting the other night, had them all answered. We wouldn't have to worry about that now. What I said was, we've basically putting a replacement bus in every year throughout the five-year CIP. But it's very much driven if we can get replacement dollars. And that replacement funding is 83% through the, through the state federal grant system and 17%. Presently, right now, the bus that we're looking at and the priority system, the way they have it is, let's put it this way, the state's going to have to have $23 million before we ever get that bus replaced. The only fact that I was trying to do is just put it out there so if the money becomes available, we've got it shown in the budget. So it's more, it's more of a, kind of a wish list until we get a little bit more closer to reality. So it's, I say wish list, but I think, I think it's prudent to put it in the budget to be out there so that we have some potential money allocated. But the chances of probably that budget, that bus being replaced are probably not, not great next year, but it's put in the budget. So I don't know if that.
So we really wouldn't save that amount of money to take it out of the budget because we're only going to spend that money.
It's about $20,000 is, is what you're looking at probably out of that, the one next year is 110.
Yeah, 22,000.
Okay.
And, and, I mean, just because you're staying here, but I want to point out because I, I have a feeling that there's a little disconnect when things get into that CIP project funding. It seems as though that's like magic money. I'm not saying that you feel this way, but this is the impression that I get. It, it seems like once it gets into these, you don't, you don't have a real good sense of how much it costs. So if we're having to borrow money to pay for the $22,000 that we're at a shortfall, you know, I, I ran the numbers up at a 4.5% interest. I mean, we end up paying another $5,400 in interest on that over 10 years. So, you know, you can say, well, the bus is only 22,000, but now let's add that interest to it. And you can say, well, you know, the money comes from sales tax. It doesn't make any difference. It's, if we're going to bond for debt, it's coming from somewhere. And so when we look at these things,
But the cost of the bus is actually, how much, 110?
110 and then it's, it's a matching.
That's the budgetary number. You got to bet it out and go from there and we'll see if all the apartments comes out to that amount. But that's, that's an estimate of how much the replacement of one of the light duty buses that.
So we would get a $110,000 bus for $22,000.
Correct. And we don't bond for it. It's, that's paid for out of cash on hand.
But it still comes, I mean, but then we're bonding for something else that could be potentially paid for by that $22,000. And I think that's my point, is that we have like these pretend things that we do where we say, well, it comes out of the sales tax dollars. And in fact, it does. But then are, are we bonding for something else when we in fact could use the money for, for that there? You don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish. You want to have a good plan. But the fact is, you know, our budget is not in good shape. So we cannot make a silk purse out of a sow's ear at this point. So, you know, we.
But I think we, I guess I feel like we should use leverage when we can get, be leveraged by grants like that. I mean.
That's how, that's why we're in some of the problems we're in now. I mean, you've got a, there's a trail that's on here for $610,000. And it's no big deal, except that the city's on the hook for $164,000, which if you run that number over 10 years at 4.5%, you've got another $40,000 in interest on that. So now you're looking at over $200,000 for the $164,000 piece that we're putting in. So when you look at that, and that's my, that's my point about the magic money.
In the community, like the bus, if we don't replace these buses, then, you know, if we have to, if we give up a grant and then have to replace a bus for 118,000, that's going to.
I think the grants are gone going. I, is that?
Well, I mean, if you take it out of the budget and that opportunity comes and we have, and we get the, you know, we'll, we'll still have the opportunity to purchase a $110,000 bus. I just, I'll, I'll still get the 83% from the state, but we still, then you got to come up with the money somewhere else to pay for that 22,000 in this case. But that, all, all we were trying to do was just try to take a look and program that each year in the event. And the bus that we are, this one may stand the better chance because it's actually a, a bus that basically had a an engine with some issues and it, it, we recently sold it. We had to get a a replacement bus so that we could be back on the same formula from another city so that, so that we didn't lose some form of priority for this bus. But like I said, right now, that bus, unless, unless this whole program comes up with $23 million and they're only funding like 2 or 4 million, that we're not replacing that bus. So.
So we're not going to probably get it anymore?
We're probably not going to get it. So I guess to me, the question is if we get the opportunity, I can come back to you and say, we got the opportunity. You got to come up with 22,000 or turn it, let somebody else, the next one on down the line, get the bus and maybe we can budget for it in future years and hopefully the maintenance costs, you know, don't continue to rise on, on these buses. It's, it's just one of those opportunities and it's a fairly, it's an extremely high percentage, in my opinion, grant rate.
Well, I don't, I don't doubt that. I mean, I see that. But I mean, I can see that, you know, like I have a teenage son and he wants a new car. And I'm saying to him, well, you know, but he's telling me, what would I, it would be more fuel efficient. And there's, you know, he wouldn't have to pay for these little repairs or something like that. And I'm like, but you don't have the other, you know, $20,000 to pay for the other piece of the car. So it doesn't do you any good at this point. And I, I mean, unfortunately, the city's been backed into a corner financially from that. I mean, so, so now we're having to say, do we want a bus or do we want books on the shelf in the library?
The good news is I just make the recommendations. You guys have to make the decisions.
But thank you for answering the question. We have some parking lot questions too while you're here.
Okay, sorry.
The parking lots at Sixth and Washington and south of Expert Tire. Budget is $65,300 for resurfacing those. And we're questioning, there are three paid, soon to be three paid stalls in one, ongoing paid, I mean, where we pay every month. And four paid stalls in the other. And we beg the question of, do they need to be resurfaced? Can we just take them out and do something temporary?
I'm not that familiar with the one behind Expert Tire, but I know the one at Sixth and Washington is in really bad shape. I think there were some questions to try to clean it up with some of the downtown stuff going on this past year. Staff really didn't want to take a load or anything and go in there because the asphalt's crumbling so bad that next thing you know.
That's why nobody parks there.
Well, and that's part of it. It's, that one's in extremely bad shape. The one at Expert Tire is, I guess if I had to say, that's one that we may be looking at a future site as part of the sewer, sewer fund, maybe to put another tank down in that area as well. So. But it's, there, there are parking lots that are in bad shape and, and we're just bringing them forward. If, if you're looking at anything else, we can do a little bit more evaluation and see if there's an alternate method or any way we can reduce the cost. But that's not a whole lot. I mean, the, the parking lot at Sixth and Washington is really shot, in my opinion. I'm not even sure how well resurfacing is going to do that one. I'm not even sure how well resurfacing is going to do that one.
See, that's what I was, I was thinking on both of them, but listen, um, can you, can you give us a, if we don't want to resurface it, we just want to patch it up to the best of our ability, what, what would we be looking at? Because again, just like you said, the one could end up being part of sewer system. I mean, what we're trying to do is why would we invest money in resurfacing, uh, one, one parking lot that has what, four, four paid or whatever and, you know, and we can just patch it and save that money and put it towards something else?
But I think too, what he's saying is so bad, why would anybody rent it? Why would anybody, if the parking lot's so bad, that's probably why none of the spots are getting rented.
I don't know. It's been like that since they put the, the box in there for people to pay, to have to pay to park in that lot. It used to be a free lot and, and it's, no one's ever parked there. You go down there practically any day or even during events, you get Snake Alley Criteria and people don't park up in there.
They get blocked out, I think.
They get blocked out.
There were four city cars parked there on Sunday.
Tonight, there were two city cars parked there, still covered with snow and there's, there's, um, Hebert's has four, four vehicles parked there. That was, that's it, that's all, that's practically all you ever see there.
But that doesn't mean there won't be more in the future.
No, no, it doesn't. I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't say for sure whether there will be or not. I just, if there, I, I'm just, just bringing it out, if there's a, if there's, might be a higher use for it, uh, private sector might be able to do better with it or we can spend $26,000 and resurface it. What Steve's saying, resurfacing may not do any good.
I mean, part of this, there are several of them on there. You're, you're probably an economy of scale. If you do more than one, you're going to get a better project lumping them all together and doing it. That's part of the reason there's, like, there's one other one at Third and Washington that needs some re, that one's more, I think, resealing and stuff, but those, I know the one at Sixth and Washington's in really bad shape.
So can we get a, so can we get a cost on, on, on patching those up?
It sounds like a team.
Uh, we, yes, we, we can do anything. Um, we can put it together. I, I have a feeling it's going to probably, I don't know. It's one of those things when you start rehabbing certain things, where do you stop and where do you start when something's in that bad a shape? But it, it definitely can be looked at and bring some numbers back to it.
I think I'd like to see it looked at. I mean, it's...
Both of them?
I would, yes, please.
Okay.
I mean, I have a parking lot that we threw some gravel on it and smoothed it out every now and then and, I mean, people park in it. I mean, it's not, they're not driving through it. It's not, we're not getting heavy trucks on it by any stretch, so...
I think some of it's the location. I mean, they're, they're quite a ways, they're quite a ways away from, from basically where anybody would park and shop or do anything, probably.
So the question begs, we don't need to put the money in. I would take it out of schedule period.
Then you take it away right before, I mean, I think, I invested in that block and I know others have, thinking we've got a parking lot back there. And so then to take it away is kind of, doesn't seem right either, I guess, to people who have invested money in, in the downtown now that are trying to do something with the downtown and, and think that that will be a parking place.
Well, it's still going to be a parking space as, as far as I know. It's just not going to be a resurfaced one, but I have to agree with Becky. I mean, you're not driving, you're not going anywhere. It's just a place to park your car and get out. So I mean, as long as, you know, the big holes are filled up, I definitely think it's, we can get by with that.
Some of the streets I drive on, I probably wish they were as good as, as smooth as what that could be made into. That's all, that's all that's the weather.
I mean, we'll, we'll get a better look, but the one I know at Sixth and Washington, that's probably if you decide to wait a year, is it going to cost, other than the escalation of the price of oil or whatever changes in the materials and manpower, it's probably not going to cost a whole lot more to replace it next year than it would two years from now because it, it's in bad shape, but... But we'll, we'll take a look at that so you can hopefully make a, make a decision and try to do everything we can to assist you if you make those decisions.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. What else?
Jim, why do we fund mowers for the Recplex and the golf course out of hotel motel tax? Why, why can't we get their, get them to a point to where they're, they're able to pay for their, their own equipment?
Well, it'd be nice to. Hotel motel tax is designed to cover, uh, culture. You have to cover, you, when you look at what hotel motel tax goes towards, you're allowed to, to put it towards, uh, the chamber for the visitors bureau, which we fund very significantly. Um, but within your, with your other uses, it has to be on things, I mean, and it can be, not go towards those. It can go to the auditorium, it can go to the, the parks, um, to the riverfront. And it, so you can, you can do that. We, I, I guess if you can come up with a structure that makes that, where the cash flow works on the Recplex without it, that would be, that would be great. We, we haven't gotten there. This is part of trying to make, make it, make it cover it. I don't know how long we've covered equipment out of there, but we have over the years.
I'm just, just asking, I want to see that as a goal, both the golf course and the, and the Recplex. Pay their own way.
Chief, can you, can you elaborate on the squad cars, the 114, 500 squad cars again?
Yeah, the 114 is the total for the squad cars and all the equipment that goes in the cars. That's for actually for two cars at a base cost of about 26,700 and then hopefully the replacement of an unmarked vehicle for the CID division, which would be, I think we allotted 15,000 plus to trade in, which it, you know, that could probably, that's probably as high as it could possibly be. Because we'll buy a vehicle that's three or four years old because the ones we've got now are seven or eight years old.
Okay.
I had a question about the car for the wastewater treatment plant. They don't understand the truck because they're doing something with that. Are they visiting with that car? Are they doing something on the general part of their day that they're using it for? Or is it just a spare car or...
Don, Don just left. I think that the main use on that is for, for meeting usage. It ends up being used by, um, well, we use it to go to meetings and staff from other departments use it too. It probably, it doesn't get used to, I don't know how much it gets used on it.
For instance, in, yeah, in private business, typically they pay a per diem on mileage and people drive their vehicles. That's, would be standard in a private business. I know of several contracting type businesses, professional organizations, and that's exactly what they do. So I have to look at that and say, why are we spending, you know, $28,000 on a car that's going to sit and we're not, you know, what are we using it for?
Can I, Don? Question was, uh, do you really need your car?
Perfect timing. That's a perfect timing.
The comment I made was that in private business, car, a vehicle, typically people are required to, to have vehicle and driver's license and they just do per diem reimbursement for vehicle usage. And my question was, why are we buying a car to the tune, and this is with the trade to the tune of $28,000? And is it necessary? And if not, can we just use a per diem payback?
I think historically, the city has wanted their employees to use a city vehicle. I'm guessing they thought maybe it was cheaper over the long run. I don't know what per diem is right now. I think we're not paying the higher things that are out there. I think we've lowered it here, didn't we? We...
39 cents.
39 cents a mile. I just know that they used to use a retired police cruiser for the most part through City Hall. And they had, uh, frequent problems with the car, especially out of town, which can become very upsetting and difficult and cost city money. And, um, we had pickup trucks at the plant that were being used by myself and my employees who go to classes. Uh, and again, the policy, as I understood it, was that the city wanted to use a city vehicle as opposed to paying per diem or whatever the term is, mileage, I guess. And, um, our, um, vehicles that we have at the plant are used to do work and, and so our pickup trucks tend to have grease on them or things, things like that. And I saw an opportunity, I had, I approached City Hall and said I would be willing to buy a vehicle. I would likely use a vehicle. I didn't trust the retired police cruisers because they just break down frequently. And I asked if we could buy a car, which that's what, this first car that we bought, this Dodge Stratus, is 2002 or 2003, whatever it is. And, uh, so that's what we typically use to go to our out of town classes. It's reliable, it's clean, and, uh, I was willing to share it with other departments certainly. I mean, it's a city car actually, as I see it. And so other departments, um, today the car, tomorrow the car's going out of town for an engineer to go to Fairfield. City halls use the car, city council people have used the car to go out of town. So, I mean, if the city wants to change the policy to go to per diem or not per diem for mileage, I feel that that's more cost effective or more acceptable. I guess that's what we could do.
Okay.
But that's just, as I know, that's just always been the policy and I, and I felt like my fund was adequate, that I could afford to buy a car as opposed to continue using a retired police cruiser and provide that reliability and, um, for not only my department but for other departments.
How often does that car get used by your department?
Uh, well, I have 18 employees. Most of them have, uh, an operator's license that's issued by the state or required to go to at least, uh, each of us is required at least to go to one eight-hour class a year, uh, to, for certification. I've used the car to drive to Madison, Wisconsin to attend seminars that are not CEU related, continuing education unit related, just professionally related as far as wastewater treatment. Um, I would say that the wastewater plant personnel probably put, oh, I don't know, maybe 25%, 30% of mileage in the car. And the rest of it, it's, it's used usually a couple of times a month to go out of town.
I guess what you need to look at, is that something that we want to continue doing is purchasing vehicles or do we want to, do we want to adopt a system where people just take their own vehicles and they get paid mileage?
Well, and the, the private sector has gone to that by, I mean, overwhelmingly and a lot of private businesses, they've done that in the last probably five to 10 years. That was my, I mean, that's my play on it is that a lot of companies have tightened their belts and there are a lot of things they've done to tighten their internal belts on what they're doing and they're looking at things and saying, you know, how often are we using them? What are we using them for? And is it not more cost effective to, because I'll, I'll run this number by you that on the car at $28,000 at a four and a half percent bond over 10 years, that would add another $6,800 in interest to the car. So that adds, now we're in that almost $35,000 for that vehicle. So I have to look at and say, you know, you know, do, I think the city really needs to get in line with, um, private business on some things. And this, I mean, I think this would be a good way to, to head that way, so. But I appreciate you answering that and it makes sense why it was in your budget that way, so.
Don, I got one other question, one up there. On the, on the lift station protection, that was for the one that down...
Market Street, the station on the riverfront by the boat ran south of the auditorium.
Was, was that just electrical or was that also...
No, it was, it was both an electrical improvement and to look at perhaps enhancing flood protection. In talking with the engineer's office the other day, um, we have this sewer separation, this sewer study being, um, done, study being made and they, he said that, what the, the engineer told me was that it's possible that lift station may play a less vital role, well, I shouldn't say vital, a less percentage. Right now that lift station handles about 65% of the city's wastewater. And of course, it's in the flood plain, if you will, and it's a very, very important lift station and it always will be an important lift station. But the engineer told me as they go through the sewer separation, uh, they are considering the feasibility and perhaps the, uh, preferred relocating that, a lift station or building a new lift station to take some and perhaps the majority of the flow that that station currently handles. And could see that lift station being downsized to handle basically the downtown area. Right now it, it covers, it carries, you know, everything central, core of the city, out west and a little bit to the south. And, uh, we may build enough, a new lift station they're talking about possibly, but that'd probably be 10 years out and located out further away from the river at a higher elevation, so it wouldn't be subject to as much potential for flooding. But the downtown area would still be going to that lift station. So that $200,000 was intended to look at providing a second power source and also providing some type of a base wall off of which we would probably extend HESCO barriers. Have you ever been up to, I, I've never seen it closely, but I understand at John O'Donnell Stadium up in Davenport, they've got, um, some type of a barrier that can be assembled as the river rises, they drop in panels to protect against the projected river stage. And if it goes up higher, they can drop more panels and that's kind of what we're thinking about putting theirs. But they're going to have to have, you know, it's going to have to have a good footing. We weren't thinking about protecting the restrooms. We were thinking the restrooms would stay on the outside of that, that buildable wall. But it would be a base wall up to which we build our HESCO barriers and make it quicker.
I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
And, and this is going to be off the top of your head, so if you don't remember them, just you can get back with me. So I, I recognize that. So in your budget, you have consulting and professional services that, that looks like they kind of range all over the board, 2011 and '12, they were at 12,500 and I see you're looking at 49,000 this next year. Seems like a pretty big jump. Is there some special project or do you know?
Well, I'm trying to think the, you know, one of the things that we wanted to do was to, um, we had engineering costs that were estimated, I think it was around 25 to, uh, wow, wait a minute, let me think about that. Maybe it was, it was $35,000, I believe, to do this project on the plant site that would improve the heating and ventilation of this process room we call the belt filter press room. I think I mentioned the last time I was here that the change of the digestion process that we have has created a sludge or a bio solids that is a lot more odiferous than what we had previously for the last 30 years. And it's an atmosphere that's very difficult to work in. And that engineering cost or $35,000 of that, that was the engineer's estimate for the engineering on that project. So I believe that's why that number jumped up for that specific project.
Okay. This was, it was just the number that stood out, so, and I, I didn't know if you knew off the top of your head what...
Sure. Anything else?
So it's your best guess on that one?
Want to talk about solid waste or...
If you want to, go right ahead. You got a podium right there.
We could talk about that all day.
No questions? I'll stick around just in case.
All right. You never know. It's been pretty random tonight. So I, as, I mean, I would suggest that we, as a city, stop funding some of these. I understand that some positions need the vehicles to get around inspections, things that they're doing it in their daily work, but things where we're just doing training and things like that out of town that we just go to a mileage payout on those. I mean, because not only do you... I mean, because not only do you have the cost of the vehicle, but you also have the, you know, maintenance and repair.
I would agree.
I mean, it's just one more, it's one more moving part that we are watching over. So, I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I don't have a problem, other than as long as all the people that work have a car good enough to drive, I guess. That's, I think, that's when it's come up, when people, I mean, I.
Okay, these are people who are being paid above whatever the average is in professional positions. And we're saying, do they have a car that's good enough to drive? I, I really, I struggle with that one. So, I mean, I do. It's not like, you know, these aren't kids that we're paying $9.50 an hour or two.
Well, I will say that there is a range of, you know, wages of the people who do use the car. And in some cases, we send multiple people, you know, three, four, five. We even, you fill the car up and then we've sent a pickup truck because we don't. And then we've had people drive their car, our own car, and not charge the city because I think there was a, I'm trying to remember, I was thinking there was a policy, maybe what it was is the individual had some personal error and wanted to run, so that was probably it. But there, there probably are people who go to the classes that don't have a car that they would like to take out of town.
While you're up here, I have a question about continuing education. This is just a curiosity question. And again, some of this relates back to how private business operates versus how city government operates. But, so if you're a hairdresser, for instance, they are required to complete so many hours of continuing education in order to maintain their license. And I understand that many professions do. So for my, my particular hairdresser, I don't think she pays her employees, she might pay for their fees due to the continuing education, but I don't think she actually pays for their time. What's the city, is, in your department, is the city's policy, is there a policy on that? And, and do we just require that people do the continuing education? My understanding is, is that we're losing some department help through, in many departments because we're allowing them to maintain their professional certification and paying them to do that. I don't have a problem that we're paying the fees for it, but some of the other I have a problem with. I mean, especially when you look at these other professions that are doing it on their own.
All I can say is that since I've been here, the city's always paid for the wastewater certification.
And pay the employee to go to and from the certification and during the hours that they're there.
Right. They, they don't get paid anything like, I mean, obviously, if the class falls outside their normal hours or anything like that, it's just that we don't require them to take vacation time or personal time when they attend. If they're, they're, they get their regular rate of pay. If they're gone for the day, they're, they're paid their eight hours of pay. And then, of course, we pay for the registration fee.
Yeah, the fees and stuff, I think that's pretty acceptable in the corporate America, that's acceptable.
But we don't require them to take vacation and attend.
Okay, so they're being paid their straight wage to, to attend and to finish their, okay.
Well, I don't have a problem with it, because we were that way before, right? Until 2005? Is that when you bought the car? Was it all?
Car in 2002, 2003. And as I said, you know, I use it, I don't, I don't use my own vehicle, haven't used my own vehicle. I've used the city vehicles. I've driven pickup trucks, well, I've driven Ranger pickup truck to Madison, Wisconsin to go to a class. Drive up one day and drive back the next, so. So, I mean, we've used pickup trucks before. But as I said, the, the policy, when I first came here, was to use the city hall car, which was a retired police cruiser. And because the, the general fund didn't have money to buy a car. I'm not in the general fund, I'm an enterprise fund. And I felt that I could, and the city manager was willing to approve me purchasing a reasonable car with the understanding that not only would I be able to use it for running errands or going to CEUs, or my employees' CEUs, but then other departments could use it too. And that way, they would have a dependable, reliable ride as opposed to making them find something else.
And I think it says when we go away, even for the council, that we're supposed to use that car, doesn't it? Must first use that and then go to.
I like the policy is to use the city, uh, city vehicles right now, but if you want to change it.
And I'm not sure if we're not charged the city, but I don't, I just don't, you know, I don't charge it.
And, and $28,000 certainly is more than a Dodge Stratus. There's been discussions about a Dodge Stratus is not very comfortable for three and four people, especially if you're taking luggage and things like that to an overnight or two or three day, the car gets checked out, sometimes it's gone for three or four days. I don't know if it's ever gonna go on for an entire week, but, you know, so you're taking luggage and so on and so forth. So the thought was is to upsize the car so it would fit a broader group of people and circumstances.
And, and I appreciate that, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to ease the city over to kind of explain to them how it works on the dark side of life, which is the corporate side of life, so.
If you would mind, I'd like to do a cost benefit analysis on the car.
Okay.
I know Sandy keeps a calendar, we can look at this last year, where it went, how much, you know, mileage it went, what we would have had to pay those people and then what we paid in gas and repairs and just.
Like to see, that'd be nice, yeah.
I think, because I know from when we look, and I look at the expense reports, I mean, mileage is high when you, you know, just even you go to Des Moines, even at 39 cents. And the gas is so much cheaper when it gets over 30 miles a gallon, even the 2002 car gets that good of gas mileage. So we see it, we've seen the, the travel expense drop, but we haven't purchased a car either in ten years. But if you divide that ten years, you know, $28,000 by 10, it's, are we saving $2,800 a year? We'll try to put some numbers together, maybe it'll show, maybe it won't, so, but we can take a look at it.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at.
But you should add the interest on, like Becky said, you should add that on.
Yeah, I think the other thing is, is that, you know, it's another, it's another vehicle and the inventory is watched over, it's, so that has a cost to the city.
Well, she's looking at it that way, that if we wouldn't have to buy that, we wouldn't have, we'd have to loan less or something else, right? That's.
That's correct, yes, uh-huh.
That's on there.
All right, let's keep it rolling.
You can use mine if you want. You got the whole fleet in order.
Jim, on the, on the sewer separation, we're doing 1.9 million dollars. What's that going to increase this sewer fund? What's that going to, what, what percentage increase is that gonna mean for the?
Sewer rates are driven by not necessarily so much those two parts of the, of the project. It's, the sewer rates are really driven by the 35 million that's estimated right now over the next 10 years.
I see.
But that's, I mean, this is part of the consent decree about the, we're at the timeframe, I think we're really supposed to already be done with Cascade and started on, so we're not, I don't know if we're technically in compliance on Cascade with where we're at. We're within a year. But this is just part of our compliance schedule. The, the bigger deals that drive our rates are the three and a half million a year that you see starting a couple of years out, is that 2017, where that starts?
Are we going to continue to try to get that schedule changed or?
Well, yeah, we've contacted an attorney and he's asking for some parameters, what we're trying to get from, and I'm still waiting from our engineers, but my guess is we're gonna probably be asking for an additional five years. We'd still be within the compliance schedules that other cities have had. But we, there's no guarantees on that. We still have to plan for where we're at right now.
I got a couple more questions about just some things that stood out, like in building code administration. They're, they have a line item, 529, says miscellaneous technical services. Looks like it's been in that $30,000 range. It went to $73,000 last year and, and then it's estimated to go to $150,000 this year.
It's Emerald Ashford primarily, but if you want to come up and talk about it.
Under building code administration?
Yeah, you want to come up and talk about how that's set up?
Yeah, that's pretty much entirely Emerald Ashford. We had a budget, I think there was 50 trees this year and 75 next year.
Those are the nuisance trees that.
Those are the trees on private property that individuals don't.
And that you're budgeting out to that, to, to do that. Okay, that's, and then I had a question about the auditorium. The utilities, the light and power were in that 30 to 40,000 range. And then we budgeted out $67,000 for this year. Was that just?
In 2015?
Yeah.
I just actually took the breakout that they had. We're, they, I think there's probably gonna, they did that, a breakout of their expenditures on an overnight basis for us. I'm not sure how well they will stick to how they have it set up. Their, their cate, and I don't know how they had it categorized either. But their, their, their net, they, they still feel they're worth, they're gonna be about 20,000 less. They're doing operations differently. I don't think their categories are gonna work out exactly as they have it set up in there.
Okay. I mean, it just was, it was just odd when you looked across and then all of a sudden it was like, hmm, so I thought maybe there was some rate change or?
No, no, it's just taking their numbers. And again, I, I know they'll have, they weren't as concerned about, I don't think that, as getting to where they, they felt very comfortable with what they were doing for their net, their net cost of operations.
How are we ever going to be able to talk about some of the employees starting to pay for some of their healthcare expenses and bring that into something that we can roll in maybe in the next two years or so? How can we start to have a conversation about that?
Our next negotiation cycle when it comes to union employees.
I'm talking about non-union employees. I don't want to mess with any of the contracts that are there.
I'm, Stephanie, I think this is more your response on this. I don't know what it, if it does any, anything with our plan. No, they, the breakout of cost certainly doesn't, but I assume you have a few things that are a part of that, though.
I guess the thought process is, is that, you know, when you look at private business over the, I mean, I know several firms that used to pay 100% law firms, they used to pay 100% of their healthcare insurance. I know other, many other corporate entities that paid 100% of their employee insurance. And unfortunately, over the last three to five years, you know, those entities have said, I, I just talked to a business owner yesterday, and he said, you know, we used to pay 100% of our family insurance for employees. And he said, we just can't do it anymore. And he said, you know, I had to go back and say, you know, not only, you know, we're gonna freeze your wages, but we simply are also going to not, I mean, you gotta pay something towards the healthcare. And, you know, he said they made several other changes, they raised deductibles, they did several new things. And I think when the average citizen in Burlington looks at it and says, we pay above average wages compared to the private sector in the city. We have above average pension in the city. And we have above average healthcare benefits in the city. And so I think at some point, I mean, the citizens ask, I, I have many people have asked me about it, when are you gonna do something about it? So the question is, how do we open the conversation and what can we do to start addressing it?
Okay. Well, we have 53 full-time non-union employees, so those are the employees that have the benefits right now that you could change.
Can, can I answer a question? Your auditorium, the heating fuel is in a separate line in our budget and it, they just totaled them up. They, their categories aren't the same.
They just made one line item on the utilities. Okay, thank you, Jim. Sorry. 53 non-union.
Yep, 53 full-time non-union employees. So, I mean, there's, I mean, you approve the non-union handbook every year. The past has always been that the, the non-union get the same benefits as the unions. That's just past practice we've had here. It hasn't, it's, I mean, I've only been here two, over, little over two years, and it hasn't been brought up. But it's been brought up to possibly change that when you open the, the contracts, if, you know, but you could have two different tiers. There's nothing stopping.
But there's nothing that separates them from changing that for this next budget year and, and asking the non-union personnel to pick up a portion of the cost.
I mean, we're not saying tons. I mean, it's not like we're gonna come back and say, hey, we want you to start paying one half of your share, you know? I don't, I don't, I think that's not a way to do it. But I think sometimes some small things can go a long way towards at least, if nothing else, making the citizens feel like that we're making a concerted effort, that all of us are making a concerted effort to kind of share through things. I mean, the private sector since 2008 really has been decimated on wages, benefits, perks and all kinds of things in many industries. And, you know, one of the areas that has not been so affected has been public entities and public employees have not, I mean, they felt, the pain that they have felt is they think that because the raise didn't go up as much, that that's a cut. In the private sector, wages were either cut or frozen. So there's, there's a huge gap in the thought process. So I feel like my purpose is to stand up and say for the citizens in Burlington and the taxpayers that we need to open this up and say, something has to give. So I don't know what you think is fair, I'm not sure who we would talk to, but, you know, I'm happy to do, I, I asked this weekend, my son and daughter-in-law, they both work for a large corporate company, I ask other private businesses in Burlington, you know, what are you paying? So I have a good idea about what they're paying and what kind of benefits they're getting. So I'd be happy to share that with.
Yeah, I guess that's up to you, five, where if, do you want to compare us to the private sector and what's going on there? Do you want to compare what other cities are paying? Most cities, we can, you know, we can do a survey, they are contributing some. Some are 2%, 4%, up to 8 or 10% is what the majority.
And you'd have to go back and look, but it seemed like it's on the singles, average community is in the, I said this this morning, I don't know if it's correct or not, it's pretty close to this, 7%. And on family, about 13%.
Right.
But that's just communities that responded to a given survey.
Right, right.
And then you're not really comparing what the benefits are, but you are comparing contribution amounts.
And I don't have a problem in comparing other cities. I mean, I, my, my experience is really in private sector and, you know, there, I think there should be some good competition between private sector and public. There's nothing wrong with that, so. So I would say to you other four, there's your opening.
I would say, yeah, we need to look into that. I'm, I'm down for living, no stone unturned.
Becky, what's your thoughts on that?
And I'm fine. Let's look at other cities, I would like to know how we compare and.
Tim, we'll have to note, Lewis County's paying 13% of their healthcare costs or thereabouts, so.
I'm in agreement.
I know we had did a presentation on our healthcare costs, what was that, about a month or two ago, and our 5% cap that's in there. So that's just something to consider. That is not gonna change the next two years, but as we open it up, the union contracts, if we do try to go and get a contribution, that will probably go away, which, so, right now, it's hard to put that dollar amount on that, but next week when we get our quotes, we can see what that would cost the city if we didn't have that 5% cap. It's just something to think about in the future. It's not that it can't change by any means, but that's some of the feeling is, is that they are giving back by having the 5% cap. We make plan changes, the unions make plan changes to get the healthcare to stay at a 5%. Whether that's changing what the healthcare benefits we're getting or changing a contribution or contributing. We haven't contributed, that hasn't been one of the options they've chosen in the past, so. But we, yeah, we can look at it, I can look at other cities, I'll first go to our comparable cities, which those are the cities that are close to our population and our size and aren't close to a metro area, which.
How soon do you think you can have that info step?
I mean, I can present it at the next work session on Monday, if you'd like. We won't get our insurance quotes unless we happen to get them early this week, we might, if we have that information, we can share that with you on Monday. But our Cobbco meeting is next Thursday, and that's when we'll get our quote of what our insurance is gonna be this next year.
And I guess the only hesitation that she's put in there on that, if we had the plan in place right now that we had in 2009, and we, instead of having. and we, instead of having the, the five percent cap, if we'd just gone to a transition to employees paying that thirteen percent towards the premiums, the city's share of the cost of health insurance would be higher now than what it is with the five percent cap. So you gotta think about the trade-off when you go to union negotiations on switching at least the union employees over to a contribution versus a cap, because cap has saved us more money than having to make that, a switch to that kind of level. Now, if you were switching to where you're doing.
I thought we were talking non-union.
Well, but you're, yeah. If, if you're going to try to get to employee contribution in the thirty percent range, then, then that, that contribution would be much better than what the five percent cap is, because the, the five percent cap works out to about a twenty percent savings to the city. It's the fact, it's the equivalent of, of having twenty percent contribution from the employees right now. But you're not gonna be able to force that unless there's some major changes to health insurance, which we're in the middle of right now. So maybe that'll come about, but right now, you couldn't force that on the unions through the, the way the process is set up. Now, you can have two tiers of employees, and it's, sounds like that's where you wanna go. It will only make it, again, it brings up the, the comments that have been made in regards to the differences between the wage scales for the top of the union level and the non-unions. You're gonna just, even if salaries, we are keeping them just a little bit above, their total compensation for the non-unions on those positions will end up being lower than what the unions are.
Let's look at the figures and.
And you can end up with that. It's just you're gonna have an awful hard, we're gonna have a hard time departmentally. You can think of specifically within your police and fire ranks, getting people to be willing to leave the union side to go to the non-union side when they're, when they don't get a bump in pay and their health insurance is worse.
I didn't hear you say that. Yeah.
Well, the only thing I'd ask that when you consider, when you do this, you have to remember my first-line supervisors are non-union by choice. They've done that to join our management team and be part of our management team. And as an example, the fire department, his first-line supervisors are captains, and they're in the union. So in essence, you're gonna give fire department first-line supervisors a raise, and you can't touch your insurance. And you're gonna require the sergeants to pay a portion of that, and then wherever this, the wage increase for us goes or doesn't go. So I just ask that you be mindful of that and that you understand my first-line supervisors are not in the union, and they did that by choice to support us and city staff and making those kind of decisions as we go down the road. And they're eligible to be unionized if they so choose. And so you know, Russ.
I had a question regarding that. Issue that was brought up about that, those pay scales. Are you able to move some of those people to a different pay grade, or are the pay grades set in stone?
On the non-union?
Yeah.
Well, what happens is if somebody's coming out of the union, if, at the, if he's coming at the top, they would get a five percent bump of where they're at.
The, the pay grades, how, how are the pay grades?
No, I'm asking about the, yeah, I'm asking about how the, how they're slotted in on the pay grades.
That was done by the Waters Consulting Group in two thousand and nine. They took the job duties, job responsibilities. And part of that was figured in based on that they were management and that they were non-union employees. And that's how all those actually, union and non-union, got put in those slots, was by the Waters Consulting Group.
So in fact, we could, we could potentially, if you have some isolated incidences, which is what it sounds like some of that is, is that we could potentially move those folks into a different pay grade schedule. You know, move them from, I don't know what your numbers are, but, you know, from a twelve to a fifteen or something along those lines. Or is that not possible to do that?
That's possible.
I, I don't know how, I'm really asking the question, is this set in stone or is it?
No, it's, it's possible to move that.
So we have some other opportunities to do some things with those pay grades.
That are hitting those.
That would positively impact the hierarchy and the staffing on things. So.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, that basically is approved. We make, we make changes throughout the year that we might feel are necessary, but then it's ultimately approved by you when we approve the non-union manual.
So the council could look at that and say, you know, we have two certain employee groups that are in pay grade twelve, and we really would like for them to be in a fifteen. And do we do that on staff recommendation or? I, I just want, if it's available, I would like the staff to think about that, because sometimes what Chief is talking about is sometimes people's responsibilities change, or they're doing more. They have, you know, we've cut other positions out, and so now they have more responsibility, and it's not unheard of to, it's not unheard of in the life I come from, for someone to be moved from one pay grade to another pay grade, or to be bumped up three pay grades. And it's really, quite frankly, not unheard of for them to be bumped down in a pay grade or two. So. But it's, it's certainly available. But I, I would really look at that if you're having some isolated instances where you really, I don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater on everything. So maybe we need to adjust those pay grades.
Yes.
Jim? On the, on the Shell Building in the Business Park, the city never had ownership of that, correct?
Correct.
The, the, uh, we're in, in agreement right now with Grow Greater Burlington that we're, we're going to do a reverse TIF. Is that, is that what we're, what we've been, what that agreement is?
It's a property tax rebate over ten years.
Okay, is that, is that the full amount of the taxes that, with it being a TIF district? Or is it just the city's portion of the taxes that are being rebated?
It's the full amount that's, that would be part of the TIF area. So, yeah, it would be the schools, counties, and cities.
All right. Just, Council, just for your information, for the, from two thousand and twelve, or two thousand and eleven and prior, that piece of property was valued at twenty-one thousand ninety-three dollars. It was valued at ag land. The building in the property was never assessed as commercial. The, uh, the net ag land was twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Grow Greater Burlington paid three hundred and fifty-seven dollars annually in taxes. That was their high.
How could that not have been assessed as commercial?
Because they're exempt, because they're a not-for-profit organization in the building, and the improvements were not, were exempt from taxes.
We have an ordinance on our books that, that establishes their ability to do that with a spec building.
Couple of years back, three years back, whatever it was, the council then signed in, in an agreement that they would essentially buy down the building for an amount over a ten-year period not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. The taxes that, or the value of that property now is one million three hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars since it's been sold to an individual. Now it comes on the tax rolls at its, its full value. The, the tax, it's now, taxes are now fifty-four thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. We're going to be giving the, not the owner of the building, but the Grow Greater Burlington about fifty-four thousand three hundred dollars in the, for taxable year twenty thirteen, which will be, those taxes are due twenty fourteen, or September twenty fourteen, March of twenty fifteen. Again, it's, it's another one of those that I think is a, is a really sweet, good old boy deal. And we can't pay our bills, but we're giving someone that pointed out, an organization that pointed out, made it very clear to me that they are a, a private organization and are not subject to the same reporting as, as government entities. And laid that very clear when I asked questions about some operating cost in, in one of the departments that they're responsible for. It just, it sickens me when I think we can be putting fifty-four thousand dollars towards the TIF debt that is in that area and our overall debt and, and start cleaning up that area that, quite frankly, I think the, the city's done a yeoman's job in, in putting in infrastructure and, and, and working with the, with Grow Greater Burlington and Badco prior to that, in, in doing everything, everything it was responsible to do. And then to, 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 uh, to even ask that of the city is grotesque. And I, I, I would.
Is this a long-term agreement or is this?
It's, it's, it's not to exceed ten years and not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Last year, they got around sixteen thousand dollars, but that was because it was a partial years taxes based on the, on the purchase. It's, it's, it's really a, it's really an unfair deal for
The taxpayers.
For the, for the taxpayers, for the TIF district, for the, the only ones, is the guy that bought the building, and he's a heck of a businessman, in the, in the chamber. And I, I, I would like to see us at least approach them and have some discussions with them, too. Hey, they, the reasoning was they had, that they used was that they, they had better use for those funds. And I just, I can't believe that the, the council at the time bought into that, that, that the council didn't have better use, and that is, is buying down that TIF. I mean, we've, we've essentially created another five hundred thousand dollars in TIF debt by doing that, by doing a reverse TIF. It's another five hundred thousand dollars in, in TIF debt out there that, that we're not gonna be able to use for the, for the next developer that comes in there. It's not there anymore.
Well, you know, I don't agree with you, Tim. That building sat there how many years? Nothing was going on. That was part of the deal. And I guess when you talk about taxpayers paying this, I think of the people who belong to the chamber and who pay to be part of the chamber, and those people are taxpayers, too. And I think there are a lot of big taxpayers in the city that belong to the chamber.
I'm a taxpayer, too. And if I make a bad business decision, there's not one of you that's gonna write me a check so that I can correct that bad business decision.
You got that right.
I mean, it's, I, I, I don't care. They're a private organization, just like I'm a private organization and you're a private organization. And they, there's no reason we should have to pay that. They have a, a luxurious facility that they work out of. They're overstaffed, and we're paying for that as taxpayers and as citizens. And I'm telling you, that fifty-four thousand dollars can be better spent for the citizens than to buy, to pay down a building for, for the chamber.
Eventually come back on the tax rolls. And I think that, how long had that building sat there? And here we are, spending budget time. But here we are, taking time from the budget, talking about something that doesn't, isn't gonna affect this budget, going back and talking about what previous councils were doing, and you just said earlier you didn't wanna talk about.
No, I said I wanted to go back and talk to them to see if we can't renegotiate this deal.
Say that the council shouldn't have done this and that when you were on council, but yet you're going back now, going back.
Put it in my face, but what I'm saying is, we can go back and talk about this. We can't go back and talk about the, the public works facility. It's already built. The, the, we've already got people working in there. The, it's, it's, it's part of what we are responsible to do for the community. We're not responsible to take, to subsidize a private organization.
That's contractual again. That's already a done deal.
You obviously don't like the chamber. We all know that. But I don't see why we should jump through hoops just because you feel that way. There are an awful lot of people that disagree with you, and I'm one of them.
Well, that's, amen.
Well, I can talk as loud as you can.
And there's a lot of members of the chamber.
Well, I know you act like we're a bunch of enemies out here. I'm a member. I resent your accusation. I'll tell you.
Let's keep it. Accusation is a fact, Bob. It's a fact. We're paying them fifty-four, we're gonna pay them fifty-four thousand dollars next year.
I know, I know. Just move on.
Let's try to stay, let's try to stay on task tonight. So we're going to, we're gonna stick with the budget items tonight.
Yeah.
So, does anybody?
That's a budget item. We're gonna, it says in there, we're gonna send them fifty-four, we're gonna, uh,
Yeah.
Pay them fifty-four thousand dollars out of the TIF.
Right.
Stephanie, is that number more like fourteen thousand they're getting this next year? They had a, a tax rebate, the building owner filed. He's not actually paying the full fifty-four thousand. He's paying, I think, on eighty, has an eighty percent rebate. So he's, he's paying about twenty percent of that bill. Notwithstanding, the money's still rebated back to the chamber, but it's more like twenty, fourteen thousand this next year.
And what's, what's the contract?
The total is still for up to five hundred thousand, whatever can come in over ten years.
Because he did have to, he does have to pay something.
Yes, he's, he's paying, he pays the full property tax. Now, he did, on that, on that full valuation you just calculated, he gets an eighty percent. It is exempt this next year, and it rolls back over, I think, a five-year period on that. And I'm not sure what the percentages are that it rolls back, but they, they won't get the full five hundred thousand. They'll still get a tremendous amount, but it won't be five hundred thousand over ten years.
And is that the agreement in, in the entire Business Park? Is that where that's coming from? Or is that just, are they doing that on an individual building basis?
That was individual building basis. They're eligible to, we have rebate schedules that are in place out, for, out there.
So we made a special exception for one building?
We have two different abatement processes that are within our ordinances based out of state statute. One is on the spec building, which allowed it to be exempt from taxation for, while the development corp owned it. We also have an abatement on there for industrial buildings that is based on, that has that sliding scale, and that's what the, the person who bought it, he filed for that, that exemption. And what that's meant for the chambers, they're, they're the ones who aren't getting the, the rebate over the course of those, that first five years, not the full amount. They'll still get, I don't know what, if we calculated that, but I think that we had an estimate that it's more, gonna probably be in the three hundred and fifty thousand range.
But because of that now, we have tax money coming in because of the sale of that where we didn't have.
Well, we still won't receive any, but the chamber's only gonna get about three hundred and fifty thousand as opposed to the five hundred thousand.
After the, after the ten years.
Doesn't change your criticism of it.
Yeah. After the ten years is up, though, you're gonna be getting fifty to sixty thousand. I mean, the city won't, they'll get a, whatever the percentages of that, so.
Were they two years deep on that contract? Were they two years, two years?
This, this year is the first tax year that taxes are being collected on.
So we were getting ag tax money before as a city.
And we'll still get that, we still get that base.
To get the baseline tax. So we're still getting the baseline tax out of it. And after the ten years is up, then we will get the valuation ta, the full valuation tax.
Anyway, nor were we down, going down any road where we were getting anything in the future, at least we are now.
At least we had a baseline tax on it.
And we still do. We, yeah, we still have that.
I would only add one other thing. When they built that, there was a, in the state of Iowa, the average time that a shell building was on the market was ten years before it sold.
Okay. Let's keep, uh, let's keep moving. Man, that ringer sounds just like mine right here. I think it's my phone.
It's his girlfriend.
Yeah. What are we going to do to put more teeth into fines for, because we're looking at ways to increase revenue and to balance a budget. But at the same time, still trying to fulfill our commitment of what we wanted to, what we want Burlington to look like and to feel like. And part of that was making sure that renters were taking care of their properties as well as homeowners. And I don't seem to, to me, I, I haven't seen a real aggressive move. And I don't seem to, to me, I, I haven't seen a real aggressive move for the upcoming year. And is there, ET, can you, anybody fill me in on that? Because I just don't think it's, and I, and I understand, I want to, I want to first start off by saying, I know that we've only got two guys.
Do you, if you want to increase the fees, we raised the fees on nuisances last year. That was discussed whether, if you guys want to raise them, it's up to you guys to do that. If you want, I don't know what you want us to do.
Well, what I'm saying is, is since the last raise, since last year, well, since we, since I got on the council, we started talking about it, I really haven't seen much of a difference. You know, I'm still driving around town, still looking at beat up places and, you know, talking to people that, you know, they're afraid to go to their landlord because they don't have the money to pay the deposit if they, if the landlord gets mad at them and puts them out. But, you know, you don't have to drive very far. It's, it's, it's all over the place, kind of like the road damage around this town. But, yeah, I, I just definitely think we need to, if you're going to rent, you know, just like renters want responsible people, or owners want responsible renters, they need to be responsible as well by giving a good product, period. And to make sure that, that people are living in a safe environment and in a healthy environment. So, I, I just don't think it has enough teeth. I don't think the fines are enough. And I want to address that in the upcoming year.
Looking at some code changes and some additional fines, is that?
Yeah, or, or just period, or just, well, yeah, definitely some code changes, but definitely some stiffer fines because apparently, you know, they don't, it's not big enough to, to make anybody want to, to make the bad, the bad renters want to, want to change up their game.
Can you give me an example now of what a fine would look like? I, I have rentals, I don't have any fines, so-
On the nuisance side, or, we don't have fines per se on the rental side. If you don't meet the code, then we either revoke your permit or make you comply within thirty days by re-inspection.
Yeah, you don't really actually do that either, but okay, we'll move through that again.
We do, so-
Okay.
On the nuisance side, on your first offense, if you don't, if we give you notice, you don't pay the nuisance, it's a fifty-dollar fee. And then it goes to council, it's additional fifty dollars, doubles to under dollars on your second offense.
And has that generated any more income in the last year, do you know, for your department?
We just did that this past summer, so I don't know that we've had that-
They haven't cycled through a full year yet?
Yeah.
Okay. And then what happens if they don't? It goes to council, then they don't comply, then?
Get the second offense.
Okay. Are you talking, Shane, about people who have, are you talking about landlords who own rental property that are not maintaining it? Are you talking about homeowners that are just-
I'm talking about landlords, homeowners. You really can't do too much. It's lim, well, you can, but I mean, it's limited, but with landlords, they are supplying the, the product. We need to make sure that everybody's accountable, that they're, that they're giving a, a good product for what's being paid. And, you know, it doesn't take, but, Timmy, you've seen them, you've probably done some work in some of them, you know, that, that you know, you wouldn't live there if, you know, if somebody paid you to.
Kind of makes you wonder how they got the rental certificate to begin with? Is that your question?
It does. And, and the fact that, you know, some people have some nice properties, but that doesn't make up for the fact that they've got five that are junk, you know, and that's just not fair.
Have any thoughts, Eric?
Well, I know on our rental process, single family waits five years, multi-family waits three years. We can go there tomorrow, inspected, it meets our code. Week later, they move someone in, it can be trashed, and we're not there for three more years.
And that's not always the owner's fault, it's to be the tenant because-
There's quite a few of those. And we're not back there unless we get a call or complaint. Like I said, some are afraid to call or complain-
And I wish-
A landlord could say, we're moving out.
Is the staff overworked on addressing nuisance complaints as far, I mean, are they not able, I, I had, someone actually stopped me today, went to, and, and she gave me the address and said, my mom and dad live here, we've called down, this place next door is just awful. Are we able to address those, or?
We're, we're not able to be proactive, no. We're able to address them, but some people don't realize too, we, I mean, there's a lot of people that are low income that we're trying to work with. We give thirty days to clean up. We come back and they've gotten some cleaned up, so maybe we get another week. And it's a process that's not, sometimes it's not overnight, it's not the next day that it gets cleaned up. So, and then you have the habitual, it gets cleaned up by our inspection date, the next week, it's all brought back in and then we're cycling through it again. That, that's our biggest problem from a code standpoint on the rentals and on the nuisances. We inspect one day out of the year for a rental, or we're there one day for the nuisance, we're gone the next day and it builds up over a week, and then the next week, it looks like nothing was done, but-
On the rental, can we put any more teeth in that? If they're a habitual offender, or do we have anything for that? I'll stay away from the private homeowner.
We've talked about, one of them with the police department of Davenport has done some stuff, but we've talked about different things requiring a landlord license that if you violated on one rental, it could affect your license for all your others. There's different things we could do. We've brought up different code changes, but every time we do that again, and we have a landlord association that, they try and work with us as well, but they, they don't want us to additional things done as well. So, there's a balance there that we try to work out.
I mean, I think about, we license cab drivers, for instance, to drive, and Chief said at one of the meetings that, you know, if they get a speeding ticket, they get their permit revoked for some period of time until, you know, they comply, I mean-
But we have that with rental permits, if you don't keep it up to code, you lose your rental permit.
For that property. There are some communities that require landlord license in addition to rental permit for each property.
But what he's saying is that they can fix it up, but I'm asking if it becomes a habit, in other words, if we're having to re-inspect these places over and over and they are cleaning it up just for the inspection, or if they're having to go back again, can we, can-
But is that the tenant or the landlord? Sometimes it can be the tenant too.
Oh, I, I've had crappy tenants. I mean, there's no doubt about it, but I mean, sometimes they need to not live there.
Yeah.
So, but I mean, that's the landlord's responsibility too.
Sometimes too, you're getting somebody moving into a place that's desperate and the place is already a hole when they're moving in, but obviously, when you don't have money and you're poor, that puts you in a different position, so you'll take what you can get and you're not going to complain. That being said, you know, if, if you're moving into a place where the owner is not taking pride in it, why would the, why would the tenant? You know, it, it starts from the top and, and again, I think that if you're making money in this city, you need to be responsible because you're making it off of the backs of the citizens and-
What I'm trying to do is get Eric to say that there's going to be a way that if we have to go back and, if it's a, if it's a place where the, we're getting, if we're getting multiple-
We could change our code and do something like that.
That's what I'm getting, I'm trying to get you to say that. I'm trying to get you, I'm trying to lead you in to say that, so-
We can change our code, whatever direction you're looking at, we can bring suggestions forward and have you review those.
I mean, maybe some people just shouldn't be landlords. I mean, that's, that's very possible.
Yeah, that goes without saying, but some people shouldn't be parents either. You know, they got to run around with kids, but-
But I mean, you know, that's, you can't really control the private homeowner, but in the landlord's, that's why I was asking if it was a landlord or if it was a private homeowner situation. But in a landlord situation, if you're having constant complaints that are validated, I think that revoke the license on them. I don't mean, but we need to put some teeth in that code. Maybe you could come back with some suggestions and I would put some pretty stiff monetary penalties in that.
We'll do that.
Thank you, my friend.
And I'll bat against the association for you on that one.
And we try to work with them, but they, they're looking out for an interest-
I, I understand that, but the thing is, the problem is, it's like a lot of other things, they're protecting some of the bad eggs, and you can't do that. Everybody's got a total line on it. So, they want to protect the bad people, then they can stay in bed with them. They'll smell bad.
All right. All right, let's give back some numbers, everybody.
Mr. Mayor, this is entertaining, man. Are you done with the bees, the places?
Yes, sir.
Again, and you said that you were going to set a time and make, I suggest you just give them a ring.
That, that sounds, that sounds fine. I'm sure maybe some other council people would probably want to get in on that, but-
No, that's fine.
Yes, thank, thank you.
We'll be glad to be with you at the ballpark or down here or wherever you want.
Bob and I sit on the bees, we could do that. What do you think, Bob?
Yes. I'm leaving town tomorrow, though, I'll be out of town for four days.
All right.
Whatever works for you.
Thank you, sir.
Lot to do that day, thank you.
Sorry for keeping you so long, I should have let you know.
Last Friday at the mall.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I can't believe that you want to leave, though, Dave.
I just left another volunteer meeting over certain people down in Fort Madison that come up to this, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we still have, we're still looking at sixty cents or four hundred thousand dollars in cutting or in the middle, so, does anybody have anything else that they, that they have that's in question regarding the budget?
Let me make a comment, because I know I haven't said much, I wasn't yelling at Tim there. The city's been working on this problem, if you will, for a couple of years, of trying to cut things and so forth. And with that in mind, I think we've done a lot of good work along that line. And there's no such thing as saying we can't cut more, because there's always opportunity there. But when I see what Jim has done with that five-year projection, I don't want to make light of the things you're bringing up, but I can accept that as it is because I know what we've done already, and maybe next year we can do more. So, that's why I'm not, but I'm not disagreeing with the issues you brought up. I'm not saying you can't cut this or not have a car, but that's why I haven't said much, because I'm so impressed with the projections here, if they hold true, that I'm pretty satisfied with that.
Well, they're definitely a lot closer than where we, where we were about, that's for sure, so.
Well, and I think of the budget talks we had a year ago and the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have cut.
Oh, right, I mean-
And now I look at what we've added up here, we're not, we're barely at a hundred thousand dollars. We have cut a lot of them. We have done a lot of cutting. I mean, I'm willing.
Yeah, I'm not closed.
But it's, I don't think it's going to make a, not a kind of difference like we made in the past, because we've got all those people that's-
I, I just want to say, again, I'm, I'm, I'm still looking for, you know, I'll take twenty-five thousand here or twenty thousand there because it all adds up.
That adds up.
Because, again, I just, and I know, Jim, you have done an awesome job on the, on the budget, you and Steph, everybody, Annette, everybody working, working on it, has put together some good figures. But the bottom line, when it comes down to where the rubber meets the road, is we're still asking the citizens to take on sixty more cents on their, on their taxes.
Three percent.
What did I say, sixty percent? I meant to say sixty cents.
Sixty cents?
You said sixty cents.
Sixty cents.
I don't know what it works on, three percent.
And for some people, that is really a big deal, from some of the people that I've talked to. And I, and I've got it both ways. I've talked to some people that said, well, hey, if we've got to do this, then let's just go ahead and bite the bullet and do it, but just keep looking for, you know, keep looking for little cuts that you can make throughout. Me, I, I don't like the sixty cents, I think we can, I think we can nibble that down a little bit. That's where I am. So, I, I'm definitely looking, looking to see if, if there's a few more here and there, and I'm, I'm still open, but I'm, I'm not-
I'm not down with a tax increase. I mean, I don't, I am not good with that. You know, as a city, we have a local option sales tax that we bring in about four million dollars a year in addition to all the property taxes, and we're saying, we just can't, we can't make this. And, and I understand there's been tons of cuts, I get it.
Well, I guess, I would be for that, but where do you find this? Where do you find, I mean, we've added up tonight, now we're new four hundred thousand dollars.
I say go back to the departments and say, what else can you trim out? And let them come up with something.
I think we've done that over and over again, I feel.
And see, I, I have to agree, I don't feel like we've really gone to the departments and really laid it out to them like that and said, hey, show us how you can work within this budget.
Well, I guess I think Jim has, that you've kind of put more pressure on the departments to cut over the last year and a half, didn't you?
If you want to cut, eighty percent of your budget is personnel.
Personnel.
So, you're, what, what services do you want to cut? I mean, that, and that's a philosophical thing here.
I would like to not have a tax increase too, but I want to get our debt down. I, I think that's, I guess I feel like that's where the money's going, that we're getting this debt down. And I would like to get the debt down to a level where things start to turn around in this city, I mean.
But I mean, I'll go back to what I said, we're asking, they're asking for a tax increase, and we have, we, and that is without funding some things that really we should be thinking about. And so, I, I have a real problem with that, I mean-
But that's because those are things we cut before to, to bring it down. We had to cut those things out just to get it to where we are now, where we're still talking about adding sixty cents, so.
I mean, it has to be great, believe me, I'm with you, I mean, I-
But we gave that up.
I know, I know, I didn't like it.
I guess, I mean, my question is, you know, when, you know, when does the asking stop? I, I see that we have a five-year budget, and Jim's saying, well, you know, it's going to, you know, then we shouldn't have to do anything else. But, you know, if that's the case, then can't we just not do it and have a five-year budget over?
I think it's going to stop when we quit giving, when people don't get, the eighty percent of the budget doesn't get raised anymore and doesn't get all the, I mean, that just happens, we're locked into that. I don't know how it's going to stop. I think it's at a higher level than us that, that would have to stop some of this, I guess, these things that we are mandated to pay. And that is causing us, our budget to go up every year.
Well, some of the mandates this year, I mean, are just, are, did not go up that much. I mean, that wasn't the entire increase in the budget, was that, was the employee mandates, the whole four hundred and some thousand on the increase this year? The hypers and the 4-1-1 fund, is that what you're talking about, Becky, on things that you're mandated to pay into?
That we can't, well, I mean, and like, we can't cut wages on union people and we're, we're stuck in contracts and mandated things that we can't cut on eighty percent of our-
Well, if that's the case, then, then they may have to cut a person out then.
But that's like eighty percent of our budget.
Then, then they may have to cut a person.
But then you're talking about the police department and the fire department.
I, there are more departments than the police and the fire, so-
But that's the largest departments, and, and I think we've said we don't want to cut them, so that's kind of like-
The city's beholden to, the city's beholden to take care of public safety, and so-
And I agree with that.
I mean, I, I just did a rough number on health insurance, on the fifty-eight full-time employees, if they would pick up a hundred dollars a month, it's fifty-eight hundred dollars a month, that's twenty-five dollars a week. It's sixty-nine, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars that the city could gain back in a year. You know? Is it worth asking for that?
Yeah. And I think we're going to look at that.
I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, if-
We do have some things coming up, coming down that will, that should hopefully take away some of the pressure as far as property sales. And I'm hoping that goes through before the end of this week. But I, I went through the budget and I'm, I'm, I'm not saying unless we cut, unless we cut back some equipment and put that off, and how long do we want to do that, and what's the equipment that we cut back? Unless we decide we want to take some boots off the ground, which I'm totally against, you know, I, I don't want to mess with Mr. Trexel's department, and I don't want to mess with Mr. Beards. So, where's that leave us?
Your, your primary areas that you can look at, you can, I think you can do without, you can look at one within buildings and ground, or buildings, I think of rental inspections, but you're going to now have no one doing nuisances. I think that's what would probably be eliminated on that. Your, your building staff is pretty much covered by the inspection fees, but you could fees, but you could outsource that. You, we could do away with building department.
How much?
And go to this, go to having all the building permits go from the state. So that's an option that you can look at. You can talk about a, some sort of a bulk cut from the library.
What type, what type of savings would, would we be looking at on the, going to the state?
None. But you can, you'd get rid of some personnel costs, but you're.
I, I think that your department there, you would have, you may create a little bit less stress and you may, I, I don't know. You may see that you could cut a halftime position or something. I don't know if you could get to that or not because of the way, there's spread so many different ways. I don't know what the overall impact of that would be. But if you look at the net cost of the department, it's 15,000 or something like that?
Yeah. Full revenues including emissions was 357, full budget, I guess prior to last year, 357 revenues and free.
And we had talked, I mean, some of these were on the list when we were doing this last, in the fall. You can look at cutting a, some position out of rec. And if you get into that, you're talking about, do you get rid of all rec programming? And that's, that's one option you can do. You could say that you want to eliminate some of our part-time positions in the summer for mowing, but, and either just say that we're just not going to upkeep parks or if a community groups comes in. But I mean, if, if you're talking rec, that's what, or the, and the parks, that's what our major cost is, is for main maintenance of those, those areas. So you're either going to see there, you're not getting the, the maintenance occurring or you're relying on someone else to do it for you. But those, those are options that you can have. Let me ask. Tim's mentioned the airport. You don't have to fund the airport. That's something that not every community does. But we do have a 2080 agreement that if you look at the, way the funding formula is set up, you're supposed to give a five-year notice before you have something like that occur. Again, my position is one that is easy to eliminate, but you get into some of the other positions and you're really, operationally, we don't have a tremendous amount that, that, within admin, that isn't performing functions where they're, they're busy all day.
Don't let anybody be mistaken. I didn't say anything about not funding the airport. I brought it up as a responsibility that we have that other communities don't.
But I don't know, public works, the majority of public works is out of road use tax. You do have, if you look at the public works that's in here, the transit system is a big chunk of it. You're not going to be able to, to do much about that. You could talk about, are your street, street and sewer crews, do they have to be the size that they are? And you put more of the public works administration over into their areas? You can have that discussion. You, I don't, and you'd have to have some discussion from Steve on what the lost manpower means for what gets, doesn't get done that's currently getting done. But those are your priorities in terms of deciding if you want to see that kind of cut go on, where, where are you willing to, to live with those changes?
Steve, can, can you come up front for me? You gave a presentation the other night and you had some slides on some equipment that was, that needed to be replaced. And I can't remember if it was the sand spreader or what the deal was, but one, you had the vehicle, you had to replace a rubber hose or a rubber fitting or something like that on it and you had to do some rewelding. How bad a shape is that really in?
Well, again, that piece of equipment that we were talking about, when we took a look at our five-year plan, this would be our, our back truck, we had it scheduled in the cycle to be replaced in 2017. Chris Clemens, the operation manager, felt it was bad enough when he looked at all the issues and the problems and the ongoing maintenance that we have, if we're going to try to utilize that piece of equipment, that it need to be bumped up from 2017 to this year. And the piece of equipment this year moved back two years later. So, I mean, and it's already to a certain extent, we probably don't use it to its full potential. We try to save it more for emergencies than operational stuff just so that we can keep it operational. So that when we really do need it, it hasn't gone to pot and we've got a major, major expense.
How many, how many of those do we have?
One.
That's it?
Yep.
You positive about that?
Well, just one back truck. We got two.
I'm just messing with you. I thought we had two of those. What was the, what was the other, what was the other piece of equipment? Wasn't there one more?
Well, we had a dump truck in 1991 we were replacing. It's 23 years old. We've got like, you know, like I said, these are already on a 20-plus year replacement cycle. And, you know, I know during the process, Jim and I and Chris talked about delaying it, but next thing you know, you, you get to the point where you get so old, your maintenance costs go up and, and it's really penny wise, pound foolish not to replace it now because you're going to increase your maintenance cost. And even like the one that we replaced or we're talking about replacing, you know, that's already got a welded bed and, and truthfully, that truck may even get handed down. Now, each year when we do this, the, the property maintenance department, when they have trucks like this, you know, they take a look and if they can kind of utilize it versus getting something else. And sometimes forestry does the same thing. And that truck, as bad as it is, may end up being used by the property maintenance. I mean, the truck, we're one truck down in that whole group. We had one of the state, it was an orange truck we had and we kind of kept limping along. And last year, the person that had the last ride in that thing ended up coming down Division Street and ended up by the locomotive with the plows, the brake system. So, I mean, there's so many things. If you keep the equipment around so long, you're, you're putting not only our employees at jeopardy, but the general public. I mean, we were lucky. No one was coming on, on the main street when he slid through that intersection.
I just needed to have you confirm that for me. Thank you, sir.
So is it easier for you to cut employees or equipment?
What, it depends what you're looking for because the majority of my budget's not general fund, general fund funded. It's, it's other sources. So, I mean.
How much of your, how much of your budget is general fund and how much is funded by road, it sounds like most of it's road use tax, which?
Well, if we take a look again at the summary sheets, I had like 1.356 million of our budget is general fund, 2.52 is road use tax, 800,000 is sewer fund, and then another 1.5 is various other funding sources. And part of what we were able to do this last year, the general fund contribution is actually going down $46,000. And that in part is because, the major reason that is, is we've had one position left that is a person resigned and we haven't replaced that. We've shifted those duties and we took the janitorial services and started contracting that out. And that's, that's the majority of why our general fund is down because we tried to look at these things and do what we could to try to operate more efficiently. And I'd rather give up janitorial services than trying to maintain the streets and the sewer system. And I'll just get off on a little bit of a tangent with that workforce. I mean, it's the subtle things that you don't see if you start eliminating those people. It's, we don't clean the catch basins as often. We're already not doing that enough. And I think one of the issues we're going to have, it hasn't been quite the issue, and we had the combined sewers, which was the storm and the sanitary water. Now we start to separate those things. We really should be jetting those more often than we are, but that's kind of, and somewhere down the road, we're going to have more, the, the reality is, you should be cleaning those type of sewers probably every three years and we're not even touching that.
Wow.
And we will start to have more backups and more issues like that, probably somewhere down the road. I'm not trying to cry wolf, but when you stop doing that kind of preventing maintenance, someone, somewhere down the road, there's going to be consequences. You won't necessarily see it today when the catch basins get cleaned because we don't clean it, but somewhere the water's not going to be getting there and then somebody's going to have a flooded basement or something somewhere else. But I mean, it's just kind of a, a compounding issue.
Thank you, Steve.
Out of his budget, in the general fund, public works are, is partially subsidized by road use tax, the public works administration, the public works building is partially subsidized by road use tax. Transit is partially subsidized by federal and state funds. Out of his budget, transit costs, a net cost to the taxpayer, 224,000 in the next year's budget. The rest of the cost for engineering gets 50,000 from local option sales tax, hasn't, but when you look at it, has a net revenue of 25,000. So essentially, it costs $25,000. Public Works Administration's 93, Public Works Building is 61,000. You have a net cost of about $180,000 for his department out of the general fund.
All right. Fun, fun, fun. I have, I have nothing left. Personally, I just need to sit down and, and kind of take all of this in. I, I still think we can get a little bit lower than that 60, 60 cents, but I'm, but it's starting to look like there's just, there's not going to be any way to keep from having some sort of increase unless somebody else comes up with some magic that, that we welcome. Council?
I just, one other question. On the ash core, are, would we be better off having a city crew just take that on and, and get it done as versus contracting it out?
Eric, you want to?
We're doing the vast majority of the city trees. Heck, we have, we have over 800 trees.
Say it again.
We have over 800 trees total in, right away in parks. And I think we have projected contracting might be 150 to 200 of those, some of the larger, more difficult ones. I think that number will come down. We met with Lion. They're looking to help us in removing trees, probably about 50 of those trees. And then, so I think our estimate might be a little high in what we're contracting out, but, but we are removing the vast majority of them. It's just some of the larger, more difficult ones that we're not able to remove.
But just those, just three guys?
Well, we have, in the summer, we have two crews. There's the, the two full-time, a part-time and then seasonal. And they estimate around, on a normal summer, without doing block pruning, they could probably remove 100 to 150 trees. But we still have to maintain the other trees that are failing as well. So we're, we're thinking that we can remove between 50 and 100 ash trees each year and hopefully we have five years between that and contracting what we can't pick out, take care of.
Thank you.
The things that you've talked about so far, the parking lots are one-time things. If you, if you don't do any improvements over those over the five-year period, that saves 62,000. We're looking at it, part of the number for that 60 cents is not just this next year, but it's looking at over a five-year period. It's a little over $2 million that that represents over a five-year period. So as you're looking to try to offset a 60-cent property tax increase, you're talking about $2 million worth of items over a five-year timeframe. The contribution towards the health insurance is an ongoing deal. So that's the kind of thing that has an impact. It's not just a one-time impact. Equipment delays from one year to the next have no net gain to us in terms of where we're trying to get to over a five-year period. If you eliminate, if you do eliminate from the five-year cycle, it has an, has an impact, but it's still just that one year. It doesn't have the, the compacted over five years. So as you're thinking through what you're wanting to accomplish, the ongoing expenditures are what has the impact over a five-year budget cycle. It's just the, the way it is.
I think too, if we cut too much, it also has an impact over the quality of life and it bites.
And that's, that's what it comes down to. How lean do we want to run? And I personally don't want to run so lean that, that things are falling apart any more than they, than they have been. I know that much. But the bottom line is, is we're going to have to make a decision on this, on this budget. How soon, how soon are we, what's the longest amount of time that we're going to be waiting back for some information that is going to affect this? Who's?
What, what are you waiting for information? Health ins, well, what are you?
I don't know. I think Steph was giving us some information. I thought Annette was and I thought ET was coming back with some as well.
They, they, I think they're.
Next work session, I think she said.
Finally to be ready by next Monday.
Okay. Well, then I think that'll, that'll pretty much let us know where we're at and what we've got to do. And, and I also would like to encourage the citizens that we have some decisions to make. So we hope to hear from more citizens. I know we'll hear from Leon. God bless you. God bless.
I'll also mention the sewer vehicle. As you go to make that, have that discussion, that's in the sewer fund. And it's, not that it's not a savings, but it doesn't impact the general fund or the property tax asking. As you go to think through what the impact of taking that out, it does save money for taxpayers. It's for ratepayers.
I just think that's what I was.
It will not have an impact on that 5% rate increase. It may help in the long, it helps in the long run though to help to minimize costs.
But to really make an impact for the budget, if we could cut wherever we wanted to cut, where would we have to cut?
Personnel. I mean, it's personnel.
Personnel where? Which personnel?
Well, that's, that's your decision.
Well, I mean, which personnel are covered by the general fund?
Police, fire.
I guess that's what I wanted to hear you say.
Rec, library.
Because that says we can't cut. We're saying we're not going to cut the police and the fire, so.
Streets, you can have, you can have an indirect impact as the general fund is paying 180,000 towards Public Works Administration. Now, the facility itself is 60,000 of that and you can't technically call that full facility cost a true, it's not a true road use tax function. It's not, you can't justify having that all go over there. But you can have cuts to your street department as well and try to push some of the costs that are in the general fund.
But if we continue that for the five years, then we are running really, really lean.
Anywhere that you make a cut, you have a change in service. And you just have to be cognizant of that and be accepting of it.
Okay. Is everybody satisfied then for tonight?
Yeah.
Supposedly as good as it's going to get for tonight. Okay. Well, then we'll try to wrap it up with the rest of the information for the next work, work session. Jim, you don't have, you have anything else you want to add?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for coming out. Everybody except for Leon. God bless you. You know, I'm just teasing Leon. You know, I'm just.
I'm kidding you.
Welcome to my world.